And get a junior in place.
And I know that there is a significant amount of interest in that position, actually, so I don't think you'll have any trouble filling it.
Oh, good, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Good. All right, so we'll be in touch about that. So, thank you. All right, let's keep moving. Um, we're going to find a board committee updates. I know Sarah had a SCRED update.
Right. I did, yeah, but I'm with the SCRED meeting. Um, I think I did share the, uh, any report with you guys. But the big thing is legislative forum next week. So if you're, hopefully, if you're planning on going to RSVP, um, all right, I'll see you on Thursday.
Okay, very good. Any other committee updates?
I had a committee, Ed committee meeting and we just kinda, it was our kickoff. So we kinda went over a lot of different stuff and how things are going and, and programming and books. Dan's here, so if I'm forgetting, mean their things. Uh, but it was more of a get together. We hadn't gotten together for a while, so we just talked about how things were going.
I mean, I took part in the Clem meeting that we're having that I knew set up to just check in with Clem leadership. Jill and Joey at the back of the room happened to be here, just to see how things are going. Whatever, it's just nice to keep the communication going, keep problems coming together. So that meant, well, I'm trying to do anything else, I don't think so. Anybody else?
I was at the ECHMAG meeting and it's kinda like one of those things where, I don't know, maybe it's somewhat easy to forget about. But actually, um, they were talking, they talked a lot about cyber security. And I just wanna give recognition to that organization, just how important their role is in protecting your kids as far as they're on my, like, computer. So just kinda giving them a nod, kind of like, yeah, they exist and they're a really important part of keeping our firewalls and all of our cybersecurity there. And they have a conference.
Perfect. Thank you. And I also sat on, you know, the Taylor's Falls parent group meeting and they're gearing up for their big fundraiser. I'm afraid I'm gonna hide the face again this year, right? The way it's shaping up. But there, there's a lot of energy and excitement around that. And then the middle school has a new parent group, the new PTO that's just, like, they just incorporated on the ninth of September.
Oh, nice.
But I'm looking forward to getting involved in that one. And with my parents had on it, so that's kind of my good.
All right, any other updates? All right. Well, move on, um, to the superintendent. Brian, Mr. Dietz, what do you have?
I have a few things to cover tonight. First, I'll, I'll echo some of the sentiments that were made earlier. It's been a great step to the school year, um, walking around our buildings and seeing our staff and students and the energy in the buildings has been really cool. It's palpable that you can feel it. And I think every year we get further down the road from COVID, it just feels like more and more normalcy. I'm excited about the work that our students have done, especially the high school gave as a part of our process to kick off our year with the national anthem and MC. Again, there's just, there's just a really good vibe right now. I'm just really excited for this year overall and the experiences our students are gonna have this year too. Dan and myself attended a housing study meeting for the county of Shasago County. You're gonna get a lot of information this weekend for me about that piece. But a couple of things that are, I think we're positive from that is number one, um, we're actually seeing a small increase in our county and out of the other cities that represent our county, um, the Shasago Lakes area is seeing the biggest increase at this point. I think the overall total was about two thousand person upgrade for up, you know, more students or people starting coming into our county globally. But we'll take whatever increases we get at this point. And they are doing some projections that show we'll have additional people coming through in the next ten years. So that was encouraging to hear. I think in addition, a lot of things they talked about too was just the issue of affordability and housing in general. Those were two main topics that came up in that conversation. It's hard to find rentals and housing, especially affordable rentals and housing in our community. So something that I think this group is trying to talk about, how do you tackle some of those issues overall? And how do you move forward with some of those pieces? Mentioned before too, coupled to that is that we have a huge Highway Eight project here coming up in the next few years. Uh, I think this is gonna have a major imprint on us. I've mentioned that before at previous meetings, but they're gonna have two lanes going both ways. And I know our city, Shasago City, has really dedicated resources to upgrade all the amenities going all the way through. So they're setting up for the future. So I think, again, we're not gonna see this anytime in the next probably five to seven or seven to ten years. But I think there is some really cool things down the road that will be really good for our district as well. So I, I think it was just good to have those type of dialogues and conversations and keep getting information about that as well. In front of you, you have a certificate. In case you didn't know, this is Board Appreciation Month. It used to be in January, so you get it twice in one year. This is great. But in all seriousness, hey, this is an important job. Every job we have in this district has value being, and your jobs are just as important. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize you for your efforts. We talk lots of times that people get to hear that celebration piece and we're trying to do more of that in our district. I wanna celebrate you guys tonight too and the work you put in for us. Uh, you're all about kids and it's a, it's a pleasure working with you and knowing that we're all growing in the same direction for our kids in our district. So just wanna thank you for your service, because again, it means a lot to me and I know to everybody else as well. And then I will segue now into the next piece. I'll, I'll set up Brent for the presentation here, but Brent Jones from Nexus is here again today. We've had an opportunity to, uh, have some moments with him and his team over the last few weeks here. And I guess for the public, what I want you to know is a few things overall. In a six-month period, we have really poured a lot of energy into making sure that we have a good plan moving forward. And that's thanks to our partners at Nexus to do the work they did overall. Tonight's a cool night because you're gonna get a chance to go ahead and hear some of the highlights of that perk overall. You're gonna hear a lot about the opportunities we have in front of us, because there are a lot. But I'll tell you what, with a plan in place and identify what we need to do, I'm excited for where this is gonna go. For our general public, I want you to know that after this meeting's done by tomorrow, we'll have this all posted on our website so that people can go ahead and access this piece. It's three hundred and eighty page of glorious, and I'd say, bring it to you office.
But we have.
Excellent. Yeah, I know, right? But Nexus did a nice job on also breaking down my favorite sites, so you'll be able to go to a site as well and see pieces. And again, I'm just excited for the conversation. We have a community advisor group coming up through shortly, student leadership group at the high school. We're gonna have a lot of good discussions about what this year do for us and more employer students. So just wanna thank Brent for his partnership and, um, if you're ready, we'll turn it over to him to.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Lieutenant Dietz. Good to be here with everybody this evening. I'm excited to share with the public what we've been up to for the last six months. Uh, this evening, I wanna give an overview of the facility master planning process.
Just scroll down.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Use the wheel, there we go. Sorry about that, everybody. That, my agenda this evening is simply give an overview of a planning process, which we've undertaken over the last six months. Give you a high-level overview of the facility, facility condition assessment of all your buildings, primarily dealing with the deferred maintenance needs, uh, large capital project needs over the next ten years, uh, educational adequacy needs, which are really addressing the remodeling needs that we see in your facilities over the next fifteen years. And then, um, walk through high-level financials and tax impacts and timelines. And then, of course, have questions at time to the end for questions, but please ask questions as we go through the presentation. So the comprehensive planning process is, uh, is a multi-year, uh, process, which we started about six months ago. We begin by listening with all the stakeholders in the district. That means we do staff surveys, we meet with all your principals, we meet with all your directors. We understand your strategic vision and goals and where the, the, the community is going as far as enrollment. We then move into the assessment phase, which is when we bring in our subject matter experts, architects, engineers, specialists that look at all the different facets of your facilities and your grounds and provide their professional expertise on the condition of your buildings and what you should prioritize as far as addressing, uh, moving forward. We are now entering what we call the solve portion of, of the process in which we've come back to you with line item budgets for all the different projects that we've identified. We've taken our first cut, a cut at what of all the projects we think you should consider. Again, I can't emphasize enough, it's your project. You have the tools. You pick and choose what you wanna undertake as far as a, a project bundle. But over the next few months, we'll be working through the solve and consultation phase of the process together to come up ultimately with a, a project bundle that we all think that we can educate the public on and we feel the public will support. Once we move to that phase, we get a communication phase, which is really the referendum campaign phase, which we can assist you and your vote yes committees on getting information out, getting people to the polls and making their, uh, casting their ballots. Uh, that's the democratic way of doing this. And then lastly, implementation. We, we help you with getting all the blueprints and bid all the projects, get you the best possible price. That way, the people that, you know, we help you plan and help you assess and plan and prioritize your projects so what's promised to the public actually gets built in the end. So there's no disconnects as far as what people thought they were gonna get and what they actually get in the end. So they know where their tax paying, tax money is going. The, uh, where we've been, uh, the timeline to date, we started this process back in December of twenty twenty-three. Introduced you to Nexus and our, and our, 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 our role and our expertise and how we can be a partner for you moving forward. We're just wrapping up the assessment, the middle phase there. We started that in February and just wrapped that up last month. Um, you've got in front of you, as Brian said, a three hundred and eighty-five page document here uh, with all the results of our efforts to date. And then now we're really moving to the next three months to work with you and collaborate with you and the community, uh, refining the project and coming up with something that we feel will be successful in the polls and, excuse me, in the ballots, uh, next spring. Who's been involved to date? Uh, we've brought in, like I said, we've brought in outside consultants, specialists from a sites and civil engineering standpoint, electrical and mechanical engineers, architects, um, data specialists, theater system specialists, roofing specialists, envelope food service and, and aquatics, um, both from a, from a pool structure standpoint and from a pool, uh, systems standpoint. Stakeholders in your, in your community or in district, so so far they've been tapped for their, their, their input. Obviously, multiple, multiple meetings with the principals. Kai on his buildings, ground staff have been instrumental in helping us pull this together. Uh, you're gonna see quite a few proposed improvements to food service and your food service director's been intimately involved with that as long, along with, uh, we brought in a food service specialist to help with that. And you can see that various directors have been involved to date. Along with, like I should, as I mentioned before, a staff survey where we gave your, your building occupants, all your teachers, uh, an opportunity to provide input on what they like about their buildings, what they'd like to see improved of their buildings. We do recommend, after we've worked through a few iterations of refining the, the project bundle, to go back in front of all your building, uh, staff and, and get their input once again. Obviously, we need the teacher's support to make a referendum successful. So why master planning? Why are you, why did you undertake this endeavor? Um, it really comes down to proactively addressing large capital needs and emphasis there is proactive. A lot of the things we're talking about here are big-ticket items, a lot of dollars that you simply can't address out of your LTFM budget, your operating fund. And it really requires a, a capital, uh, building referendum to address these. And that really keeps you out of the reactive mode and, and frankly, putting a burden on your general fund. We want all your general fund dollars to go to the teachers and staff and to the classrooms. Um, we don't want them going to repair costs and, and emergency, emergency, uh, retrofits. So we wanna be proactive. It's, you know, obviously, you're tasked with responsibly maintaining these community assets. Uh, we wanna make sure that the schools, the aesthetics of the schools into your next year represent the quality education and quality, um, teaching and learning that's going on in your buildings. Like I mentioned, we wanna reduce ongoing repair costs and surprises. We wanna address any educational space deficiencies, education and education delivery and, um, has changed over the, over, since a lot of these buildings built, obviously, contrast this building and how those buildings laid out to some of your older buildings, it's kinda night and day, right? And we wanna bring some of them, some of the amenities as much as we can into your older schools. So, uh, again, we have an equitable learning environment for everybody. Uh, we wanna repurpose it and we also wanna repurpose any spaces and buildings that, things that changed over the last couple of decades and are not utilized as much as they, they used to be, well, how can we make better use of those spaces? We'll start with the facility condition assessment, which is, as I mentioned before, the deferred maintenance. We had our specialists come and look at everything from, you heard us today, from the grass tops to the rooftops, um, everything from the site to the building structure, the systems within, till all the interior finishes and, and, uh, surfaces that people see. Uh, but there's a lot to the facilities that are behind the scenes, above ceilings, behind walls, that the public doesn't see, but we gotta make sure that we maintain. Your schools, like I said, this is a nice new, beautiful school. You've made lots of investments in your buildings in the past, particularly back in twenty nineteen. Some schools had, had less done since then, primarily the middle school. But you can see in the table in the upper right here, some of the vintages of, of your buildings. And like the middle school, it goes back to nineteen thirty-five with a lot of square footage from fifty-nine to sixty-eight, right? Same thing with the primary school. So there's, there's areas of this building that are, you know, in systems that are forty, fifty, sixty years old. And it's not that they're gonna die tomorrow, but again, you wanna be out ahead of it and be proactive in planning for their renewal. It should mention that, uh, you know, the question may come up if, you know, well, why don't we just run them to the ground and build new? Well, your buildings have a lot of good bones to them. All these buildings are built, you know, like a hundred-year lifespan. And, um, we've found, uh, doing this, uh, for, for thirty years, that we can renew a building to like new condition for fifty cents on the dollar compared to replacing the brand-new school. So, um, you know, I just wanna get that answer or answer that question out there right away. You save money by redoing your schools versus building new. District-wide, um, what we've looked at, building envelope needs, so building envelope, everything from the exterior walls, exterior windows, doors, roof, things of that nature. Uh, we've identified about eight-point-six million dollars in needs across the district. A, a lot of roofing replacements. I shouldn't say a lot. You've done a great job of maintaining your roofs. Um, you've done, uh, you put in, uh, built-up, thirty-year guaranteed built-up roofs that realistically have a forty-year life, but there's still some sections that haven't been done. You can see a picture on the bottom right there of a rubber roof that's been patched. About, there's about six patches on that corner right there. Um, there's just a few sections left in the, in the, in the district that we wanna bring up to your, uh, very good standard of a built-up roof. Uh, we wanna deal with the brick masonry repair needs as far as, uh, joint sealants, bricks falling, things of that nature. I mentioned there's exterior, quite a few exterior doors and, and storefronts that need to be addressed. Not so many windows. There's a few that are problematic that are, you know, over forty years old that, that need to be addressed, but not a lot there. And then, uh, kind of a smaller project there. I think you took down the, correct me if I'm right, Robin, but you took down the Taylor's Falls chimney, right?
Yep.
And we also, uh, what we're proposing to do with the middle school, we could take down that large chimney there as well. Um, so you don't have to continue to maintain that. Moving on to mechanical systems, uh, much bigger project need here, particularly at, uh, at the, at the middle school. But district-wide, about twenty-five million dollars in mechanical systems needs. And when I say mechanical, that's your heating, that's your cooling, that's your ventilation and your plumbing. Um, so, uh, we wanna upgrade your, your buildings to, uh, electric, electronic digital control that'll help with, will increase comfort in their, in the spaces and help your troubleshooting and help your maintenance staff. Keep things running energy efficiently, but keeping your occupants comfortable. There's some older air handling and rooftop ventilation units that are end of their life that should be addressed. There's cooling, there's spaces in the buildings that still aren't air conditioning, so we've, air-conditioned, excuse me. So you'll see line items to add air conditioning to those spaces. Again, it's up to you if you wanna cool them or not, uh, as well as address some of the, uh, there's some aging refrigerants that are no longer manufactured and that will need to be changed out. Talk about exhaust systems, uh, that need to be upgraded, uh, general building exhaust as far, and as well as some specialty exhaust areas and some of your tech areas. And then, um, your buildings are sprinkled, except for your middle school, in a small portion of your high school. So we've, we're showing you a line item to add fire sprinklers to round out your, your fire safety, uh, systems. And then lastly, some plumbing upgrades. Um, there are some galvanized pipings, some little iron pipes that are starting to rust and discolor water. Uh, we wanna stay ahead of those and replace those with copper. There's some sump pump issues, some sanitary lines, things of that nature that just need to be maintained, um, so they operate effectively. Electrical systems, about seven million dollars identified and higher priority needs there. Um, there are some older panels and switch gear that need to be replaced that are, are over fifty years old. There are also some areas in some of your buildings that, um, just weren't ever designed to have the number of outfits that we need today. Uh, everything's digital, there's one-to-one devices. Every student comes in with two or three things that need to be charged. Um, in these schools, these buildings just, or some of these rooms just don't have the circuits to deal with that. So we wanna address that and get rid of all the extension cords and power strips that are probably some of your, some of your rooms. Uh, update, uh, update your lighting to LED to make it more efficient. Uh, replace your fire alarm systems and paging systems, uh, where needed, and expand your security camera coverage. We're proposing a district-wide telephone upgrade and as well, and then also give you some options for different emergency power, uh, solutions. And then there's some miscellaneous sound systems around the district, district, getting some large group instruction spaces and some gymnasium spaces that need to be addressed. Interior finishes are, are things like carpet, ceilings, uh, wall paint, interior doors for the partitions. Case work, these are the things that, you know, um, there's a lot, there's a lot of stu-, there's a lot of occupants in these buildings. A lot of students have come and, come through the doors of these schools in the last thirty, forty, fifty years. So these things, after thirty, forty, fifty years, take a beating. So there's some areas in the buildings just need to be refreshed and, and we, and fixed. Um, there's some locker needs at the middle school that need to be replaced. There's some bleachers that, uh, need to be replaced. And as I mentioned, um, quite a few are just the general interior finishes that people see. We wanna upgrade those and, 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 um, if, if carpet's got ten years of life left in it or five years of life left in it even, we recommend keep it, run it till it's worn out. But there are areas of the building that are worn out and you should replace. Areas that've still got life, um, that you wanna address maybe five, six years down the road, we feel you can deal with that with your long-term facility maintenance renewal. About thirteen million dollars worth of work there. And then sites was about seven-point-five million dollars, site improvements. Creditive drainage improvements, uh, on the north side of the high school. A lot of your high school, uh, athletic fields need drainage improvements and you, you, you all see in the puddles and it's probably bigger than puddles, um, probably little ponds in most of your play areas. There's, uh, athletic areas in the spring, uh, miscellaneous concrete repairs, quite a few parking lot replacements, primarily at the, at the primary school, uh, Taylor's Falls and the middle school. We are looking at some enhancements of adding some parking to the primary school to help your early childhood, uh, traffic flow there. And then we're also looking at playground, uh, both playground equipment and fall protection and drainage at both the primary school and Taylor's Falls. And then lastly, from deferred maintenance, I mentioned quite a bit of the drainage issues at the fields. Um, your aquatic center is a wonderful community asset, the only pool in the community. Um, we're looking at, uh, uh, re-tiling both the two, the pool vessel itself, along with the deck tile, addressing any structural leaks that are in the vessel that, that will, that have been found. Um, there's a lot of main circulation systems, uh, scupper systems, gutter systems, and filtration systems that, that have reached the end of life and should be renewed for the next, last for the next twenty, thirty years. Um, the pool ceiling needs to be, uh, cleaned, painted, and made some, some ventilation improvements made there along with the LED lighting. And we wanna resurface the tennis courts at the middle school. And then we'd also wanna add lighting to, or we're showing you the cost to add lighting to some of your varsity, your varsity baseball or your varsity softball and, um, upgrade the lighting at your varsity football stadium. So those are things for you to consider. Whoops. And then lastly, the one building people probably don't really think about is the bus garage. Um, you do outsource your bussing to a third party, but they do utilize your, your, um, building you still own. Um, if you're gonna keep that building over the long haul, there's about two million dollars worth of needs there. Replacing the parking lot, upgrading some, um, replacing some sanitary lines that need to be addressed for, for the oil separation. Um, there's some structural reinforcement that just needs to happen. And then, uh, just some safety upgrades as far as CO2, uh, monitoring, uh, fire alarm, things of that nature. Moving on to educational adequacy, what do we mean by that? That's really how well does your buildings work today for your students and staff, um, to facilitate the teaching and learning that, that are there, that they're to do. Um, it's really, you know, this is what we're talking about remodeling and modernization. So we look at everything from, you know, space. Now, the, uh, you have enough classrooms, are the classrooms in the, on the right size to meet the needs of the, of the groups that are using them? Are they located in the right part of the building? The classrooms have the right amenities? Uh, we look at safety and security in the buildings. We look at circulation. I mean, we put a thousand kids in a building and you have a bell hanging every, every, every fifteen minutes. There's a lot of movement in those buildings and you wanna make sure that movement, uh, is efficient and, um, doesn't lead to any sort of, uh, disciplinary needs, uh, troubles there. You know, that's, that time between classes is when things happen, right? We wanna make sure everything is, uh, everything works smoothly there. Uh, we wanna look at furniture. A lot of your buildings have really old furniture. If you graduated here, you can probably find your desk somewhere in these buildings. Um, and it's something that doesn't really get thought of very often, but every thirty years, you probably should take a hard look at upgrading your furniture. And then lastly, we wanna look at, um, just how the buildings are organized and are things located where they really should be. We'll talk about that in a moment, particularly when it comes to some of your offices. Starting with the high school, what we're proposing there, and, you know, it's kind of hard to see there maybe, but you, you've all seen this picture before. Um, we wanna do some minor remodeling to the main administrative area. When you come into the building at the main office, the main core open area that, that building could be, um, remodeled for a little more space efficiency there and make better use of the underutilized cubes that are in that area. We wanna update some of the commons spaces and I'll show you a picture in a moment what we mean by commons, uh, repurposing. A lot of your, students just don't use lockers like they used to, right? They, they, they don't have as many books as they used to. Everything's digital and they do carry most of their day-to-day things they need during the day in a backpack. So you have far more, uh, lockers in this building than you utilize. We'd like to repurpose some of those locker areas to be more, um, learning spaces and, and social learning spaces. That can be small group instruction, it could be a large group instruction, it could be one-on-one quiet time, uh, spaces. We wanna interconnect those to your classroom, classrooms as well as your media center. Your locker rooms and restrooms are, are proposed to be addressed for privacy, uh, reasons, looking at private changing areas and private showers for your lockers, locker rooms in both the middle school and the high school. And we're also looking at private restrooms in both the middle school and high school. You still have your girls' restrooms and still have your boys' restrooms, but they'd be private individual stalls and I'll show you a picture of that in a moment. We're looking at, um, possibly adding a, a training center back by the athletic wing. You have a wonderful community wellness center. It's well utilized, actually utilized too much. And that, we do have scheduling problems between the public and your athletic teams. It's a good problem to have. Um, that space is, is wonderful and being used to the, to the utmost. But, uh, we're looking at putting a smaller, uh, call it an ancillary, um, training space up by the locker rooms where your, your, uh, during the peak times, when the public wants to use the fitness centers, but you have some, uh, varsity teams or I shouldn't say varsity, any, any of your athletic teams need to use a space as well for training. We don't have that problem and they can go use some, um, free weight space in the, uh, new training center. We're looking at, uh, remodeling your fax area and adding a, um, commercial culinary arts space to that. Kind of goes along with some of your career pathways and enhancing, uh, one of the career pathways you have there. And then we're looking to possibly, um, add a, um, event room to the pool area. Talking to your community head staff, they, they get a lot, lots of requests to have, use the pool for birthday parties and, and things of that nature. And we wanna give them a space that's directly adjacent to the pool, where they have a visual supervision of the pool and the kiddie pool and, uh, can, uh, meet the needs, uh, the demands of the public with that as, as well as enhance some of the storage needs in the pool area. And then we wanna improve the, um, rear community head security entrance to the high school and make that a little more functional.
And there, you spent about a minute and a half talking about the upgrades in theater as well.
The theater, uh, the theater, yeah, if you see it there, I, I forget exactly what we had in there, but we've looked at everything in the theater from, um, sound systems, lighting systems. We've looked at the rigging and curtains and then any of, obviously, any of the finish needs in that building. But, yeah, we did bring in a theatrical consultant that deals with all of those specialty systems. So, um, well, those will be addressed as well as part of the deferred maintenance. One other thing I mentioned, I did mention there was, um, right now, just south of your cafeteria, there's a big grass area. And, um, when it's nice in Minnesota and schools in session, I know a lot of students go out and use that space. We're just saying we should enhance that space, pour some concrete out, make a concrete patio, if you wanna call it that. Put a door connecting that to the cafeteria and give some permanent outdoor seating out there, outdoor eating space out there. And, uh, the kids are using it, so let's make it a respectful, respectful place and make it more conducive to how they're using it. Sharing a couple of examples of some renderings, this is a, just a concept. Again, none of this has been designed. If the referendums, if you include these projects in a referendum and it's successful, there would be a design phase, which obviously, uh, district staff and community members would be involved with. This is purely a concept, but this is that main center, uh, used to be the old cafeteria years ago. Now it's a great big locker bay full of lockers that are frankly unused. And we're saying, can we reimagine this space? So you'll see in this rendering, um, sort of filling in where those stairs are now and making this space a little bit wider for circulation there. It's kind of a trip and fall hazard right now. We're looking at putting some, uh, you know, cut the. Looking at putting some, you know, kind of the Genius Bar type spaces in there. So, kids can, we call it sticky space, so kids go, can plug in, you know, use their laptop or whatever, their Chromebook, what have you, and they can work. They can, they can work together, they can study together. You can have a large group instruction back here, you can have a study hall. You can bring a couple of classes together. We can have a teaching wall here with video display and all that. And then we're also showing some small group rooms where, think of them as sort of glass-in-closed conference rooms, where again, people can go work collaboratively, but they're acoustically separated from everything else so they can concentrate and not bother their neighbors. We're looking at something similar to this also along that main corridor outside the media center at the high school. When we talked about privacy improvements at the middle school and high school, the picture on the left shows what we've done for private changing areas and private showers, right? So, no longer the old large group showers. And then to the right is an example of what we mean by private restrooms. So, you have full floor-to-ceiling doors, enclosed stalls, and then just the commons shared washing area outside of the stalls. Moving to the middle school, looking at about nine point four million of needs there. I should have mentioned the high school. As far as remodeling projects that have been identified, it was about six point six million dollars of remodeling projects. Middle school is a little bit more, about nine million. Starting on the main floor here, we're proposing to move the main office to the far west end of the building. It's like frankly, when you drive up to the building where you think the front door is, is where we should put the front door. And it's, right now, the office, you have to staff, you have to buzz in and you have to staff a welcoming area and then walk down the hall of the office. So, we want, from a safety, security, and just community accessibility standpoint, we want to have that at the periphery of your building. So, we want to move that down to where your art room is now, adjacent to your media center on the west end, and make the same, the corresponding changes to parking for ADA and visitor parking stalls and things of that nature. Staying on that floor, we want, throughout your classroom wings, we want to drop in some small group instruction spaces. So, when students need to do something on their own or with a couple of classmates, if they're not doing it sitting on the floor in the hallway, we do have some small areas that work well for this. And I'll show you kind of what we mean by small group instruction with a picture in a moment. We have a special, special ed room here that used to be a fax room back in the day that's still got an old kitchen, kitchen teaching area in there that we want to get out of there and rehab that room. There's an, there's an underutilized space right next to that, that is part of the wall is torn apart in there. We want to finish that room off, give it a door to the hallway, and make it usable space. Again, you could use it for small group, you could use it for another conference room, you could use it for special ed, lots of different, you could use it for an office, itinerary office, things of that nature. So, we want to make it usable. You mentioned the private restroom concept. And then down in your shop wing of the building, right now, this is, this whole area is open. So, if you want to use this backspace, and right now, it kind of works because you have an instructor that teaches both in both these spaces. But if you ever really want to reuse this old art area and have a different structure there and have classes going on simultaneously, or even divide this into multiple spaces, we're proposing putting a corridor down here, just like you have in every other school. You have a masonry corridor there. So, we'd have a couple sets of double doors into the wood shop here. We'd have to relocate where some of your wood storage is. But we just want to make that, give you an opportunity. This is what it would look like if you wanted to improve that space. Right now, we're not showing any remodeling needs or improvements in the St. Croix River Valley part of your co-op area of the building. What do I mean by small group instruction space? Like I said, kind of glass-in-closed conference rooms. The areas in the middle school are kind of longer and narrow, so we could have an open, we could take the wall down adjacent to the hallway, have a soft seating group right there for sticky space for students to use. And we could set the enclosed conference room space a little bit further into the space. So, you can kind of have two types of spaces at the middle school. But this is what we mean. And we'd outfit it with appropriate furniture and tech technology in there as far as video displays. But the idea is to again, to have visual supervision but acoustical separation for these types of spaces.
Can I jump in there with my last picture? As far as you know, we did this work in a different district. And these type of spaces and the work they've talked about to renovate the spaces became some of the popular spaces in our schools for our students, and our staff as well. They found so much value in that piece and we're talking about this again. Try to get that sort of 21st century learning model up to grade where we're at. There's some really great value again for our owners and also for our staff that do this.
Moving on to the, I guess I'd call it the second level of the middle school. So, we mentioned we moved the office where the art is. So, art would get relocated here where the current principal office area is. This office space here would just get reconfigured for student services and for counseling, things of that nature. And we'd also have, excuse me, a conference room up there. Again, we dropped in some small group spaces in your classroom wings on this level as well. The big change here is, what I heard loud and clear, the first time I went through this building was besides office location was the size of the cafeteria. And we looked at how we can address that. And our, I think, kind of unique solution here is relocating where fitness is in the, in the big gymnasium portion of the building. Sliding where your gymnasium basketball or FIAE courts are and bleachers are to the north and building a new wall right along here. And then really building a new, where the old gymnasium portion, portion of the little gym was, that becomes a permanent cafeteria slash common space. It's where you can have community functions. It's where you can have staff meetings. It gives you enough space where all your students can get through the serving lines that is right, will remain where they're at. And we'd open that wall up and really connect that to your existing cafeteria space back here. So, no longer is it halftime cafeteria, halftime gym. And obviously, the food serving time sets the schedule, which affects the FIAE schedule. It affects other schedules. So, no longer the tail wagging the dogs from a scheduling standpoint. We work, again, and then we're proposing a receiving addition here and then reorientating or relocating where some of your coolers and freezers are to make the workflow and storage of your food service space better. I mentioned moving your fitness center. We're proposing taking this large boys' locker room that was frankly larger than you needed in a middle school. I think it's just remnants of when this was high school many, many years ago, and cutting that in half and putting half of it to fitness center. Half of it remains a boys' locker room, again, with those private changing areas and private showers. Girls' locker room would stay where it is. But having that fitness center adjacent to your wood gym there, so it would, some windows such that your FIAE constructor can have half a class doing something in the fitness center and half a class in the gym and still have that visual supervision. This is a rendering of what the middle school cafeteria could look like. So, this is on the far west end. So, this is where your, this is, this space right here is gymnasium right now. We're proposing to take, build a wall, take down the existing wall, slide it to the north, put a new wall in there with a visual glass into that gym, change the flooring here, change the ceiling here, and then open that wall up. We're looking to the east and that space in the background there is your cafeteria addition or your new portion of your cafeteria now. So, this is just a rendering of what that space could look like and how it's permanently set up to be a cafeteria slash commons. And then lastly, at the middle school is the third floor, third floor classroom wing on the west end there. That was originally designed as open concept. And over the years, it's had some less than permanent walls put up between the classrooms and in the hallway. It's sort of just gradually gotten filled in with furniture and some partition walls. But it's very noisy up there. It's poor, poor temperature control. The air gets dumped in one end and it has to travel all the other end of the building for the return air. So, poor comfort, poor acoustics up there. Everybody hears everybody up there. And we're proposing to basically gut this portion of the building, add fire sprinklers so we can then have the right fire separation walls that we need, and then put in permanent walls that go from the floor to the roof deck. So, there's no sound transmission up over the ceiling tiles through the return air grills and make that space nice, as nice as any space in the, make it like new space up there, just like you have sort of on your newer 1998 wing of the building. Taylor's Falls, we're looking at about three point four million dollars of projects for you to consider there. You did a lot of improvements in 2019, built that nice new addition there to the east. What we're proposing here is renovate the third grade restrooms, much like you did the classrooms by the front door. We're proposing to change and renovate and expand the nurses' area there and give them a true ADA accessible restroom in there and reconfigure and secure the entry to the boiler room there. Encourage you to walk that space and you'll understand what I mean there. It's quite, kind of a unique area in the back part of that hallway there that we want to rectify. We want to, right now, you have a shared music and art space. We just want the art, we kind of want to give an end to that. It's a nice, big, beautiful room. But we want to reappoint the one end of that room to make it more useful for art, particularly when it comes to our storage and flooring and sinks and that nature. Because art can be obviously quite a bit more messy than music. So, we want to just outfit that appropriately. And then lastly, the biggest improvement here, the area in blue here is an addition, kind of squares off that building and gives you a new receiving area as well as new area for kitchen food storage and new space for cooler and freezer. That allows us to get, to reconfigure the entire servery, allow you to have two serving lines, and get those storage rooms and coolers and freezers out of the cafeteria, give you more space. You heard about, you know, you're serving breakfast now. It's, you're trying to serve, you know, in the classrooms or everybody at once. You don't get to bring breakfast through in shifts like you do lunch. It give you more space for breakfast as well as throughput for lunchtime. Here's a rendering of what that would look like, kind of. So, we could expand this whole end of the, this end of the building, give you a dish drop, give you a larger serving space, get those rooms out of, make the cafeteria bigger and put some windows in there and connect the cafeteria to the rest of the building visually. Primary school, looking at three million dollars of improvements there. Again, biggest impetus there is food service. Moving the servery out of the hallway here and putting that where receiving was. Moving receiving here where some of your speech, TSA, and things of that nature were located. Moving, take the stage out that is not used as a staging longer. It's just, if you go in there, it's just for storage. Knocking the stage out, bringing everything down to grade, giving you more offices there, giving you appropriate FIAE storage, giving you chair storage on this end of the gym, and giving you all the different offices and special spaces, specialty spaces that you need there. You'll see some areas where we had some partition walls. Again, we want to put in permanent walls for better acoustics. And then you have this corner of the building where you have three reading specialists serving three groups of students at a time in the same space, which obviously, as you can understand, is not as effective as if we could give them their own space and again, keep it acoustically separated so they can focus on what the teacher is trying to teach them. So, how does that all roll up? The team looked at about 118 million dollars worth of projects district-wide. Of that 118, there's what, 87.5 million we think you should consider in a referendum. We realize that all comes down to affordability. But all 87.5 million that's put in front of you for consideration would benefit students and staff. Every, every project there has an advocate somewhere within your, in your, in your district. I understand it comes down to affordability and tax, tax appetite, things of that nature. So, some tough decisions will be made, have to be made, some compromises will have to be made. People need to understand, you probably can't do everything. But what's the, I guess, what's risen to the top is that 87.5. And you can see how it breaks down by building and by sort of group space, like kind of what I walked through before, types of improvements in the building. And we'll be working with you over the next three months to continue to refine this project bundle for something that the public can support. What does, what does that mean to taxpayers working with Robin and your financial consultant, Aylers? Aylers ran some preliminary numbers, which was, they ran a, what's a $30 million referendum, $50 million referendum, and $70 million referendum. Again, these are very conservative. They, we all know interest rates were lowered by the Fed last week or before, last week. And they're projected to continue to go down. So, by the time you're looking at a referendum next year, I think with these numbers will be even better. And Aylers was very conservative in how they looked at tax-based growth and things of that nature. But a $30 million project from a tax, using these conservative estimates, a $30 million project on average home here that we're seeing is around $375,000. A $30 million project would have about $11 a month impact for average taxpayer. A $50 million referendum would be about $20 a month. And a $70 million referendum would be about $32 a month. So, like I said, and I should also mention, from an agricultural standpoint, when you do a referendum like this and bond for it, all this, all this type of debt qualifies for the Ag to School credit. So, this, from a, from a landowner standpoint, from egg landowner standpoint, the state covers 70% of the tax bill, which is great. And they finally rectified that about five years ago. Beyond just going to the referendum, you do have, the board does have at their disposal different alternative funding. And we'll be working with Aylers and Robin and your finance committee to explore these over the next few months. You've got your long-term facilities maintenance revenue that you need to use to make fix and repair, address fix and repair projects on an ongoing basis. You can use a portion of that to address some of these needs and not put it on the ballot. There are some projects that qualify, that qualify for additional LTFM levy authority, about 3.5 million we've projected. There's about, your additions that we've looked at at Taylor's Falls Middle School and High School, they would qualify, which is known as a lease levy authority. There's about 3.5 million dollars of additions that we could do and not put on the ballot. And then there's a tax abatement levy that addresses parking lots, both parking lot renewals and parking lot expansions. So, and that's about 4.5 million. So, you don't have to use these, but these are things I think we're going to want to discuss over the next few months. And a lot of our clients utilize these simply to take it off the vote. And that way, your communications plan, it's basically telling the public we're going to address the things that we have the authority to address. And then what we can't, we're going to ask of your support and helps with the messaging and it makes the data in the ballot box smaller. Do you have anything to add here, Brian?
Uh, no, I think you covered it really well.
Caught you there, didn't I? All right, so the next few months, we're going to continue to refine this. You know, we all understand 87.5 million is a lot of money. We, we all, we understand that fully. So, how are we going to prioritize that and get that to the final amount? So, starting a community survey. Peter Leatherman's group is starting the survey this Thursday. He's going to start the phone surveys, a completely randomized survey that calls both landlines and cell phone lines. It randomly tests all your different demographics. So, we want to make sure we don't overrepresent in the calling too many people from this side of the district versus Taylor's Falls. We want to make sure that the overall mix of the 400 calls represents your overall voter mix. So, we don't want, we want to make sure that our number of retired people are fully represented in the survey. We don't want it by randomization be overrepresented. Or people that are, work for the district, we want, we don't want them overrepresented. So, it's randomized, randomized, but also we make sure that the results aren't skewed in any way to one demographic or another. So, that'll be commencing here in Thursday. On Thursday, we'll be back, or Peter will be back in front of you to go through the survey results like the third week in October, kind of looking at some dates there to make that work. So, obviously, we want to listen to that community, that survey. It tests both different attributes of the plan, different components. And like, oh, yeah, we, we're supportive of spending money on that, but not so much that. We want to, we want to weigh that through the survey. And it also tests tax impact, tax appetite. What, you know, how much can people afford to contribute to the school district? That's an input, that's an input data source, along with the community advisory committee, which first meeting is next Monday. The task force there. So, we'll be sharing a lot of this with them and getting their input. Again, they're not a decision-making group. The board makes all the decisions, but they are certainly an input group and we want to hear them out. The more information, the more feedback we can get, the better we can refine the solution and better we can ensure that it's successful in the referendum. All that information is going to come back. Next, this will work with the district administration, both at the district level and building level to further prioritize the projects. We'll bring that back to the finance committee. The finance committee will spend a lot of time going through the various options and going through a lot of the detail to the point where hopefully the finance committee can bring to the full board, this is the bundle we kind of recommend going to the, going to the public with. If we need to, before the referendum vote, we can do another survey with a specific project and engage support there. But ultimately, it comes to the full board here for ratification and for you to tweak as you, as you see fit. And again, I mentioned, there's a great big shopping list in the back of this report. It's your project. You pick and choose and make it as big as small as you want. We're here to help you. It's your project, you pick and choose and make it as big as small as you want, we're here to help you with that and help answer any questions you have. Lastly, timeline, we are, we just finished the two boxes here, the blue and the green here. We are entering the light green here, the community input phase I mentioned with the meetings and surveys next week. And then we'll be back, really looking to make hard decisions in the December-January timeframe. If you're going to go out for the vote on the April primary, the April eighth referendum vote, you need to make a decision by January sixteenth. So, if you're not ready, well, there's five, five periods in the, in the calendar year, you can go out for a referendum. If you're ready and the public seems supportive, we'll be, we'll be ready to go in April. If we need more time and more education of the public or more refinement, we'll pause and do it later down, down, in the calendar year, so. I went through that really fast, I know you've seen it before, but any questions?
Do you mind if I ask, Gabe and Catherine, I know you just got a bird's eye of listening to some of the ideas, did anything strike you that you'd like to share?
I definitely have something I'd like to share. I think that when I was in middle school, one of my biggest concerns specifically was with the top floor. I mean, not only is it noisy and impair learning, but quite frankly, it's dangerous. And we live in a society where we live in where things like this happen and we have to prepare for them. And I just remember going through those drills and I was like, well, what are we going to do? And they couldn't tell me anything and that's kind of terrifying. And so I think that that overall has been such a high level priority, but additionally, I think that the proposed improvements for the communal space in the high school would be really, really utilized, because right now, there's not even really any places to sit around the school. And I know that it would definitely be nice someplace to collaborate with students, even for groups. I mean, not even students on their own, but a lot of extracurriculars and activities like that could utilize these spaces. Beyond classrooms, which I think would be immensely beneficial, so that's just my perspective.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
So I worked for the Performing Arts Center during the school year. And so, first of the updates for the tech and for the main gym, specifically the new sound system in the main gym. We had our coronation last week and the microphone actually was inconsistently working throughout the entirety of our coronation. Which I heard was one of the biggest like downfalls of the whole event. But I've known for a couple of years that we've had inconsistent sound usage in the main gym, which main gym is, you know, by the name, our main gym. So it's something we should have pretty good sound systems on. And then for the Performing Arts Center, I think, yeah, more, the, the more we get the sound and lighting improved, you know, the better it is. I sometimes go in the back to grab some stuff and there's some lighting stuff back there that's really dated, it's very dated, it is. And so, you know, Ian does his best, but you know, the more we can get upgraded in there's, over time, the better. Because then, you know, we have a space that can be successfully utilized more often. And definitely could host more like events if we had sufficient supplies for that, so.
Thanks, I caught you, my captain, throwing me a bone there.
She did bring up a wonderful point that I forgot, thank you for reminding me, is that that third floor of the middle school doesn't have doors to the classrooms, is what she's referring to. I just want the public to understand that, and you can't just add doors right now, because you don't have fire sprinklers in there, so.
We understand that, we've heard about the safety over there in the top floor of the middle school, you bring up a common concern. Any other questions for Brent?
Hi, I have a question. Brent, can you share with us your experience with other school districts in doing this whole facilities assessment? Which tools you've been?
Which, which tools, or, okay. I've been doing this for almost thirty years. Implemented over two billion dollars of projects like this. We have offices in Maple Grove, Madison, Wisconsin, Milwaukee, so we cover the two states primarily. Do a little work with Illinois, a little bit of work in North Dakota, but primarily the two states. And like I said, we've done, assessment wise, we've assessed probably over, I can't remember, it's crazy how many million square feet that we've done this with. It's, it kind of blurs after a while. But I will say that we've never, we've never not passed a referendum. We have taken two swings at it before, but we've ultimately always been able to get to a solution with the public and support.
Any other questions from the board for Brent? Sure there'll be questions in the future.
Oh yeah, lots of questions, that's okay, that's what, that's, that's the phase we're in.
Did, did I remember correctly, I could be totally forgetting something else, but you guys, your company really specializes in the energy sector or came out of the energy sector? Am I wrong on this? Beginning of the company, you guys did a lot with like insulation and energy, am I?
No, way back in my career, there's quite a few people, I shouldn't say quite a few. There's a smattering of people that I used to work with years ago, we used to do what was called energy performance contracting. That, like I said, that was, that was literally thirty years ago. But right now, no, our, our business, we still, we designed the first lead building. You know, leads, people kind of know what lead is now, energy sustainability. We designed the first lead building in the state of Minnesota back in two thousand and one, it's an elementary school up in Zimmerman. It was the third school in the world at the time. So yes, we do look at things with the energy bent, but you know, it's, the world is green. Think we'd say what you want about climate change, I personally believe it's real. You know, we want these buildings to be efficient, and it's not just climate change, but you have limited operational dollars, we want spaces to be energy efficient. But, so that, we're very good at making buildings efficient, but it's a pretty small subset of what we do.
Yeah, well, I was just bringing that up.
It is kind of where we started then.
Like, we got twenty five million in HVAC mechanical, but you guys are experts in energy efficiency, HVAC, that sort of thing.
Yes, it's one of our strongest, strongest groups, yeah. And it's, and it's, again, it's to make it energy efficient, but also to make it, we try to pride ourselves in trying to engineer maintenance out too. You know, you know, you never have enough maintenance staff, right? You never have enough operational dollars, so we want systems that are energy efficient, but also robust and not troublesome and finicky, if that makes sense, so.
Superintendent Deets wanted to add something too, and if you don't mind, Brian, I wanted to say something first. I wanted to say you're a new company to us, and just when people look at the depth of what you've given us here. I just want the community to understand, we actually asked for the depth, because we want to know, we want to know what our needs are specifically. So that as we make these decisions, we're making good decisions with taxpayer dollars. And that we can assure our taxpayers that the decisions we make from your study will take care of things for a while into the future. So then in two years, we're not coming back needing things, and in two more years, we're not coming back needing things. We're, we ask you to do a thorough examination of all of our buildings, all the components, and tell us what it was. So that we can make good decisions moving forward, so thank you for that. We don't want people to think you gave us the success of what without us asking for all of this. It's what we want to do, so.
I dumped out that as a perfect segue. We're doing the right work. This has been overdue for a while, and I'm so proud of all of us and of our partnership with Nexus at this point, because this conference study builds confidence. And I think that's something that we have to gain in our community and each and every day with the work we're doing. And I want people to know we're doing the right work to make sure we get this right. Like, there's a big field, and for me especially, where again, we have one shot to really correct these pieces and get us in a good, really good place. And with all the work and energy we put into this piece, we're going to be successful because of that. And I think, you know, speaking about the long-term viability too, this gives solutions that are fifteen to twenty years in length, some more. Like a roof to thirty to forty, things of that nature, but we're giving a long-term solution as opposed to a bandied approach, which just doesn't work. And I really, your comments, you two talking about your experiences, really spoke to me, because that's what we're trying to do. I want them to know too, there's going to be a lot of communication happening the next six months. We'll get out there, if you want to invite me to come talk to you, I will talk to you anytime, anywhere, and have that conversation. I want you to know that again, our staff, I've already got booked from the seventh of October to the fourteenth of October, from on top to our staff with all this stuff. It's going to be good for us, again, to engage these dialogues, get some feedback, be able to show this stuff and talk about that we have a good plan that's going to make sense for our district long-term. And the last piece I sort of just wrote down is just two words, it's time, it's time for us right now. There is a story behind every situation that we talked about tonight, and I think that again, we're going to talk about those stories, we're going to talk about the why behind this. But it's our time, and I'm excited for the next opportunity to start advancing this conversation forward. So, Brent, just want to thank you and your team, you've done an excellent job overall. I've had the pleasure of working with Nexus before in a different district nearby, and the work they did was transformational for us. And I'm, I'm really excited for the next six months of our conversation, so thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Alright, thank you, Brent. Okay, with that, we can move on to the consent agenda, which includes the claims and accounts, the personnel contracts, meeting minutes, and then the NCA ending. Got another officer group with our district after a little bit. So unless there's no questions, we'll take a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor of FIAID?
Aye.
Again, same sign, the consent agenda passes, we have no old business. So, I saw Mr. Weiss arrive, I'm going to move on to new business and talk a little bit about the Shisago High School Social Studies trip. Bill, wherever you're comfortable, if you want to come on up or sit wherever.
Could fell asleep there a little bit. Alright, I'm here just to talk, I approached Ms. Latyakli this summer about doing another Europe trip. We, last one we did was in twenty nineteen, like much of the world, COVID kind of disrupted, you know, we were planning on going like every other year and there's just been a disruption on that. So it's time to get back and doing some stuff. We've had a lot of success with these trips in the past, with number of students going and the experiences that they got and all that, so. We're looking at doing one in July of twenty five, mid-July, and we would be going to France and Germany. So, go to Paris, hit all the likely spots, and then go over to the western part of, of France, kind of along the German border there and in that Alsace-Lorraine area. And then into parts of Germany and including Strasbourg, Heidelberg, and then along the Rhine River. And so, part of the historical tour, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, obviously, in all those places, there's a lot of history stuff. But as you go along that western region of France, that's also, you know, region that during the world wars, a lot of history stuff going on, especially World War One. There's a number of spots that they had for western front areas. There was another part, if I really want to nerd out on the history stuff, that France has something called the Mahagenno Line, which was their defensive fortification along the German border. There's still parts of it that are left today that you can go and see. As well as all sorts of other cathedrals and castles, you know, dating back to the Middle Ages, so. So, that's, that's the plan, we would, you know, announce this to students, make it available for all nine through twelve students, because there'd probably be some current seniors. I know a couple that would be interested in going, so we make it available for them. And like I said, it's, we've had really good experiences with our, our kids that have gone in the past. And it's, it's been a really good educational opportunity, so just looking to provide that opportunity for those that are interested and have the time to and financial means to do it.
Is there an organization you use, Bill, that you just keep using because they do a really nice job, or have you switched that around?
You know, we've, we've gone with a group called EF. This time, I'm looking at a group called Explorica. It's, it's a little smaller and just some of the things they can do can be a little bit more personalized, where EF, I think, and just talking to some other colleagues at other schools, I think it's gotten maybe a little too big. I mean, it's, they're not bad, I just heard good things about this one, so. And I like some of the different options that they have, so.
Does anyone have questions for the trip? Damien Chabra?
Lori asked that last time, yeah.
I asked it every time, it says, nope, I don't have to do that.
Well, never say never, but.
It sounds like an excellent opportunity.
Yeah, it is pretty cool, it's been fun.
I was thinking about that, like, it's expensive, but instead of a family trying to finance it, maybe for the entire family, maybe this would be an opportunity for a student to go and create an opportunity for kids, so.
And, you know, there is a cost to it, but I don't know, everybody's, you know, different in, you know, what they're, where they want to put their, their money. I mean, personally, in our family, we've given our kids a lot of travel experiences, even if it was kind of tight, that's just things that they've done. My daughters both, you know, studied abroad while they were in college and for, you know, four or five months at a time. And I just said goodbye to my second daughter, Rachel's gone to Paraguay for two years in the Peace Corps. She left Sunday, and so, I mean, that's, she is just got an itch to, you know, go out and see the world and do things. She went on one of these trips back in twenty nineteen, kind of reluctantly, because you know, mom and dad were along with Chabros, but, you know. She went and I don't want to say that was the only thing that she did, because they also went on to middle school trips to New York, it was without me. Like I said, for us, our family, that was just always a priority, I know there's a lot of other people that like to do that, so just to provide that opportunity. And it's nice about these tours is that everything is set up. I mean, you're going to go to a museum, you jump right to the front of the line, you know, you're going to go, I mean, you just, you have it all set up so you're, I mean, it's, it's what you, kind of part of the service is that you get that, those opportunities to not have to wait. It is sometimes hurting cats when you got, you know, we take groups of, you know, twenty some kids along, and then you're matched with maybe, you know, another twenty students, parents were from another school. And that can be hurting cats, but that's all part of the experience, you know, somebody misses a subway ride in Paris and they have to sit there for a while with another group. You figure it out, and that's what we were able to do, it's good.
And I'm not grilling you, but are there enough staff that generally want to go along, that's not?
Yeah, that, that hasn't been a issue. But I'll let you know if there's not. I'm sure somewhere there's, you know, staff can be, you know.
Persuaded or?
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying staff can be very vague, you know, so.
Yeah. Okay, so if there aren't any questions, we need a motion and a second to accept the, the social studies trip.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Alright, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor of FIAID?
Aye.
Again, same sign. Thanks for coming and explaining it all to us tonight.
Alright, thank you, good night.
You too. Alright, sounds like fun. Alright, let's move on to donations, so they're listed, we have some donations and we will take them as a resolution. We have East Central Energy, we have the Center City Fire Department, Lake Ridge Electric, the Bolt Company, Shisago City Fire Department, American Legion, Auxiliary Two Twenty Five. For a variety of things from school supplies to football, to just a donation to Lakeside and to the band. So, we'll need a motion and then we'll take a resolution vote on that.
I'll make a motion to accept the donations.
I'll second it.
And I'll start with you, Sarah, if that's okay.
Sarah, aye.
Josh, aye.
Jen, aye.
Brenda, aye.
And Lori, aye. That resolution passes.
Can I just say, I appreciate how it's laid out here too, that we can see what it's all intended for?
Yes, it is really nice. Thanks, Michelle. Okay, we're moving on to lane changes, they're all listed before you. This is something we typically do at this point in time, just people that earn enough credits to make lane changes. And Corey coordinates it all and gives us the list, so. We need a motion and a second to accept the planned lane changes for this.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign, the lane changes pass. We have some second reads on policy, and I think I'll have a new fundraising from where I've been. We've seen them before, and so tonight is the final vote on the new fundraising policy. Again, I think it's just putting an extra step in where maybe Robin has the final look at.
In a new form, yeah.
And a new form to submit. And from what it looks like, you submit the form to like your supervisor, get it signed off, and then it goes to you, and make sure it's all written in it.
Yep, I'm just kind of keeping track of everything now, so we know the fundraising, you know, activities that are happening.
Yeah, so any other questions about the fundraising policy? Okay, then we need a motion and a second to accept Policy Five Eleven for fundraising.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign, that motion passes. Alright, we're moving on to the Iowa proxy. This is something we do every year, we have to name someone in the district and a secondary person, we get into like the data management systems. We get into like the data management systems. Um, and so, it names Brian Dietz and Michelle Clist, um, to be our Iowa proxies. And so, we just need a motion and a second to approve adding Michelle Clist, um, as the secondary person.
I'll make a motion to add, Michelle.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions over that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. That motion passes.
There's a specific document.
All right, we are moving on to our levy, limitation and certification approval. Are you ready for us?
I am. Are you ready for me?
I'm ready.
I've got this thirty-nine page document that I'm going to go through.
Oh, she's.
Just kidding.
I'm out.
Brenda? So, this is just the usual and customary thing that we go through. This is the levy that, uh, we started this process in July. We update enrollment, estimates, um, budgets, leases, uh, career in tech, and then community ed has a whole, um, part in here as well, and then our debt service. But this is a project that we start in July, kind of moves through now. And this is what we consider our preliminary levy. So, you can see it's a one point six percent increase. Um, what I'm asking tonight is to have the school boards, um, uh, certify the max, which means that, and it has to be in by June, or September thirtieth anyway. So, we have a couple of days that if there is a change, that we can make that very quickly and there'd be a, and we wouldn't have to come back to the board to accept that. And I do have another document in there, yep, that one that Michelle just brought up. This is the one that we certified tonight and we get to MDE and get to our counties. This one just kind of shows a little bit where it's changed from one year to the next. And most of it, when I go through it again, most of it's based on pupil units. So, and they're all estimates. And what we do, what I do is I put in an estimate for the current year and then they have a process that goes back two years and it brings everything to actual. So, that's where there's always adjustments in there. So, let's say, you know, our, you know, our pupil units, we estimated last year at thirty-three hundred and they came in at thirty-three oh one. So, they're going to make that adjustment in the next year. And I'll go into this in much more detail during truth and taxation. And I know that's very exciting for everyone. Um, but, so that's what it is mainly in the general fund. Uh, community service, that's based on, um, that's all based on population of our district and the population of our students under five. And then, under the debt service, that's our, those are our mortgage payments. So, those are all in there and those are set by, most everything in here is set by legislation. So, there isn't a whole lot we can do. We just put in our estimates and then our, um, enrollment. So, that's where we're at right now. I'm just requesting that you approve the max, just in case there is a change that we can make in the next day or two. And then we'll bring the, I'll bring the final one after we treat the taxation. Any questions on anything? Like I said, I do have this thirty-nine page document, if you'd like to read it too, in very small print.
Okay, if there's no questions, we need a motion and a second to approve certifying the max.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to certify the max. I'll, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. That motion passes. And the last thing, um, before we set a date, is the Trill Wolf Creek Service Agreement for this year?
Yep, and I can talk about, a little bit about that as well. We did make a modification, um, with Trill Wolf Creek. And this is our, this is our, like, our, the services we do for them. It has nothing to do with the, um, what's it called, Brian?
Sponsorship.
Sponsorship, yeah, whatever it is. Um, so, this is what the business office does. This is what HR does. This is some technology. Um, the changes that we made in here were under human resources in HR. Um, last year, our HR department was utilized a lot and so, we needed to make a change there. So, there's a line in here that any service, any HR services beyond six hours per month will be charged at an additional hourly rate to them. Uh, we changed it up a little bit in the special education services, just to clarify things, um, what we actually do for them and it's a lot of reporting. And the other thing was under food service, I believe, the meal service. Um, they are not eligible for the lunch program because they are an online school. So, that was a change, but they are eligible for, um, catering. And so, there, we're actually catering some meals over there. Um, but we still take care of their free and reduced applications. So, those are the major changes and they have already approved it, um, with their board. So, it's just us approving it as well, or you and the board.
Thanks for explaining that. Are there any other questions about that? If not, we need a motion and a second to accept the Trill Wolf Creek Service Agreement. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. That motion passes. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
All right, last order of business. We have to set a working session because with all of this new data we've received and some of the decisions we have to make, we need to meet again, an extra meeting. So, Brian had emailed the board earlier tonight and asked if we could go until October twenty-first.
Twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
So, we're hoping for one of those mornings.
And that'll work with our, just as Brent talked about tonight, the survey is out and launched at this point. Uh, the main part will be whether that is available in the morning to come out those days or it could come the twenty-fourth of the evening. So, appreciate your flexibility on that basis, Bob.
So, in your email responses from everyone, I didn't see them all. Do you, was there a certain date that sort of rose to the top?
Uh, thus far, I think you're talking, getting email responses back and just listing, I think, all dates worked with the exception of one person, so the twenty-fourth would be really difficult to do.
Okay.